Good evening. We'll call to your order the March 4th, 2025 Meeting of the Auburn Common Council. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation or reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And I just ask that everyone keep the Watson family in their thoughts as they deal with the tragic loss of former Common Council member Mike Watson.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to roll call. Councilman Fincham?
Here.
Councilman Braun?
Here.
Councilman Webb?
Here.
Councilwoman DeWitt?
Here.
Councilman Williams? Councilman Bundy? Councilwoman Prosser? Council in front of you, you have the meeting minutes from the February 18th regular meeting.
Moved to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the minutes. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Due to the number of visitors and guests this evening, I will not be reading the list, but please know if you've signed in, you would be entered into the official meeting minutes for tonight's meeting. Welcome. Under Communications, we have a couple awards to hand out. The first one is Citizen of the Year. That is an award that was introduced this administration to recognize individuals in our community who go above and beyond to make a positive impact. These are the people who often work behind the scenes improving our community without seeking recognition. Nominations have been submitted by the public, and this year, we received several deserving candidates. After careful consideration, one individual stood out and was selected by our team for this honor. This year's Nash, excuse me, this year's Citizen of the Year, a person who has shown unwavering dedication to improving the well-being of DeKalb County is Tyler Cleverly. Tyler's commitment to our community is nothing short of inspiring. He has poured his heart into numerous organizations and causes, always striving to make a difference. He has served on various committees and boards, including St. Martin's Healthcare, Neighbor Link DeKalb County, Drug Free DeKalb County, Young Professionals of DeKalb County, and United Way of DeKalb County. But it is, it is in his role as Executive Director of the United Way of DeKalb County that truly highlights his tireless work to make our community stronger. Tyler's work is fueled by his passion for helping others. In 2020, he was honored with the Helping Hand Award from the United Way, a well-deserved recognition of his exceptional service. He works incredibly hard, often logging 60 to 80-hour work weeks, even more in June as he prepares for the United Way's Annual Day of Caring event, an event that has become a cornerstone of our community's efforts to give back. Through his dedication, Tyler has shown all of us what it means to put others first, to serve with integrity, and to work tirelessly for the betterment of our community. We're deeply grateful for his contributions and the positive change he continues to create. Congratulations Tyler on being named this year's Citizen of the Year. Your passion, hard work, and commitment inspire all of us to do our part in making DeKalb County an even better place to live.
We do have one more. This is one, I came across the article in the paper the other day, a reference to the little that has given a lot to our viewers far from here, and I just want to take a feed me to recognize him. So I'd like to take a moment to recognize him as the most deeply been involved in our community for over 40 years. In 1982, he helped found the Auburn P L D band and continues to get active members to this day. He was a longtime repairman, and actually he got me involved in the brotherhood a couple of years ago, and has served as the President of the Auburn Water and Trail Committee for the past 15 years. It is a great honor that I have the privilege of presenting to this service of work, the Nick Shankel, a correct mission of the many years of dedication and services to the city of Auburn.
We, I have the liberty to have the floor for a minute and a half, absolutely. I have decided to step down as President of the Auburn Water and Trail. It's been my privilege and honor to serve as President for the past 15 years. I have given this decision a lot of thought. I know the next President will carry on our mission to provide a safe and enjoyable trail for our county to use. Our endowment fund will help continue the progress that needs to continue to grow, to provide for future maintenance. Our board has allowed qualified people to help in the present. Thanks for all the hard work, kindness, and friendship to our, our trail to grow, and now become a part of the future of the system. This is what makes me proud of Auburn. The city of Auburn gets we helped in several ways, and we thank you. Do you know that Eric Headmers and the Park Board have rode along from Morning Charlotte and County 36? Years. We may have applied lead killer the past five years, and this year, pod was still under the same woodwork crack. Also, a special thanks to a local concrete contractor. Including Kevin Webb, who helped repair the cracks when we could not run two nickels together in 2014. I'm sure you all knew that. Thanks, Kevin, and we will always remember your help when we needed the most. Lastly, the city provided $72,000 for 20% cash in 1922, for their portion of the next level trail grant that was just completed. Without the city and county support, this $1.3 million project could not have been accomplished to receive the DNR funds. This opportunity to receive the invitation to come to the council meeting to tell the community how much we value your support. We certainly appreciate it. I thank you. And I know, nobody will all know what he did, but I do. Thanks.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the council? Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the council? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Clerk Treasure?
Good evening. I have the current vouchers for $2,44,930.57.
Moved to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the vouchers. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I also have the January's bank reconciliation is complete and on the website for your review.
Thank you. Ordinances and resolutions?
We have no ordinances or resolution on the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to reports. Next, we are going to begin the State of the City, which is a 2024 year in review. In 2024, you may have noticed if you've came in from the south or from the west, that we have put in two new Welcome to Auburn signs. Those signs were purchased with a grant through the DeKalb County Visitors Bureau and that team, and then time and materials were donated by MF Projects, Speedway Ready Mix, and Chuck's Concrete. We have purchased the remaining two signs to go out on the east side and on the north side of town. So once those come in, we will get those installed in 2025. We're going to begin with departments. The first is Auburn Essential Services. Susan Guyer is the General Manager. In 2024, they installed over 15 miles of infrastructure in rural DeKalb County. They've also partnered with Creek Enterprises to finish the build-out in Garrett, which will be completed in 2025 in about six to eight months. They were very diligent in seeking out grant funding. They received funding for 17 project locations, seven of which are completed, and the total amount of the grants received is $81,216 in broadband equity access and deployment program dollars. They continue to see customer growth in its service footprint as the new homes and businesses are developed. The AES team proactively installs fiber infrastructure ahead of the developments. Moving on to IT, the Director for our IT Department is Ramel Hosenovic. Couple of the key things that we tried to accomplish in 2024 was to complete a full cybersecurity assessment, which we have, implement some full training to protect against phishing scams through our emails, enabled some filtering for our city cell phones to protect those, and then also they've identified areas that need work and have put plans in place for continuous vulnerability, excuse me, vulnerability monitoring, and they have a roadmap that by the end of 2025, we are going to make some improvements and do a reassessment to see where we end up. Numbers to know for IT is they received just over 1,800 tickets from all the various departments and resolved them. 90% were resolved in the same day. Priority tickets were resolved within an hour, and then we also upgraded our phone system, switching from an outdated Cisco Call Manager to Ring Logic, which is a more modern system and more efficient. We're going to move on to public safety. Next, we have the Auburn Fire Department. That is led by Fire Chief Doug Cox. By the numbers, the Fire Department responded to over 1,700 calls in 2024. We have 32 full-time firefighters on staff that serve and protect Auburn, Union Township, Jackson Township, and also provide mutual aid for other departments. As a department, they completed 30, just over 3,300 hours of training. They also had just over 1,300 firefighters from outside the city come in to utilize the District 3 training facility, and they made just about 1,900 public education contacts, which include our Touch of Trucks, community events, and Fire Safety Month out at the elementary schools. They had two new pieces of apparatus come into service. One was a 2024 Sutfin engine, which replaced the old Engine 90, or excuse me, Engine 23, I believe, which was a 1998 engine, and then we also had the 2024 Pierce 100-foot aerial that replaced the old ladder truck 27, which was a 1993. So we got a long life out of that. It had 31 years. So also in '23, the department purchased 1.6 acres on the north end of Cardinal Court, which is on the south side of the current training facility, so that they can expand and create a hazmat training area, which will consist of tanker truck, tanker car, other hazmat props, and a training structure that accommodates, I believe, a walkout basement and some other tools. And that was made possible with support of the Auburn Redevelopment Commission and the DeKalb County Redevelopment Commission. We just broke ground actually on the first phase yesterday, so we're excited. One of the other programs that the Fire Department offers is their Auburn Fire Cadet Program. It's open to men and women 15 years of age or older that live in DeKalb, Steben, Noble, Allen, McGrange, and Whitley Counties. We currently have 16 cadets enrolled in the program, and just a fun fact, there's about 50% of the cadets that go through the program end up being full-time or volunteer firefighters. Over the past 25 years, they've had 66 cadets complete the course, and each year, they take a trip as a group. This year, excuse me, this past year, they had the opportunity to go to DC and New York City, touring various fire stations, memorial sites, and so forth. Auburn Police Department, that is led by Police Chief Corey Heffelfinger. And one thing that the department does is it takes great pride in its commitment to the community, which is reflected in the city's recognition as the fourth safest city with a population of 10,000 to 50,000 in Indiana and the number five in the top 10 best places to raise a family. By the numbers, our police officers responded to just over 8,400 calls, which was down 342 from the previous year. They responded to 14 emergency response calls. The SRO, Jeremy Heffelfinger, was assigned to the city's First School Resource Officer position, which serves J.R. Watson and McKinney Harrison. They also secured $13,509 in grant funds for various equipment. They have 13 certified instructors on staff as well, and they completed just under 3,500 hours of law enforcement training just in 2024. One of the initiatives we implemented at the beginning of this administration was our community policing, and Chief Heffelfinger made the statement that we want the community to know we're here for them. The response from the community has been overwhelmingly positive, and we remain committed to providing the best law enforcement service possible. Again, that's a program that had started in 2024 where we broke the city down into four quadrants, and there's approximately five officers assigned to each of those quadrants. And once a shift, they must patrol through there, and the initiative there is to allow them to build relationships with the residents. Also, Auburn PD participates in about 20 community events throughout the year as well. Touch a Truck, the Fair, and so on. Moving on to the Building and Planning Department, Administrator is Ryan Shamball, City Planner is Jim Catteratt. By the numbers, in 2024, the city annexed another 78 acres on the city's east side voluntarily, which increased the valuation to $47,785,654, which is up 4% from the previous year. There was 61 homes constructed. Average home value went up 10%, and they issued a total of 1,298 permits. Some of the new commercial developments were the Tube Car Wash, Carve Market, Barrel and Blaze, Panda Express, Chipotle, Verizon, Bell Tire, Texas Roadhouse, and then the Dollar General Market became construction late in 2024. One of the other programs that the Building and Planning Department works with is the Facade Grant Program, and that's a joint venture between the Auburn Redevelopment Commission and the Auburn Main Street. This year in 2024, the total investment was $95,167.73, which 50% of that was reimbursed from the program. Auburn Electric Department, General Manager is Justin Frye. Auburn Electric has just under 8,900 customers. That's residential, commercial, and industrial. They had 135 service installs for residential and commercial developments. They installed about 13,500 feet of new overhead and underground, and they also had roughly 1,100 hours of in-kind hours assisting neighborhood public utilities, which is not uncommon. Some of the key accomplishments, Auburn Electric was awarded the IMEA Safety Excellence Award for Large Utility out of the 72 members in the organization. Average outage duration was 1 hour 30 minutes, and they highlight one good point. The severe storm we had mid-July, I'll never forget, it was July 16th, knocked out power to over 1,000 residents, and within three hours, most of them residents, other than about 30 or 40, were out of power. They had one industry here in town that they had to do a little more work, but that's pretty impressive to have that many customers back up within that short amount of time. I'd like to share that 2024 for Auburn Electric was a year of growth, development, and dedication. Through infrastructure upgrades, community engagement, and a focus on reliability, Auburn Electric has positioned itself for continued success. Auburn Engineering Department, which is led by the Civil City Engineer Darrell McConnell. They completed 13 projects in 2024. That's construction or design. They do do some of their design in-house, totaling $4.2 million in construction projects. One of the largest projects was a John Ketchum Drain, which was just over $2 million, and redevelopment partnered with the city and the county on that project and put just over 1.5 million towards the project, and the state paid the other roughly $500,000. Also, there was about just over 10 miles of pavement treated in 2024 as well. Next, Auburn Street Department, Street Superintendent is Bill Brandon. And by the numbers, they did approximately 5.5 miles of streets with crack seal. 2.5 miles of streets were either reconstructed, milled, or overlaid. Installed just over 4,200 linear feet of pavement striping. Little over 15,000 linear feet of sidewalk, which included updating 76 ADA ramps throughout the city. Collected a lot of leaves, and 21 city residents took advantage of the residential sidewalk program with a total of 1,098 feet being installed. One thing I'd like to highlight is the Tree Commission partnered with the street departments. They were recognized for 31 years. For 31 years of being Tree City USA, and they planted 70 trees throughout the city with the vast majority of them being residential requests. Auburn Parks and Rec, Park Superintendent Eric Dipmars. They had a large number of participants that took part in over 240 programs that were offered by the Parks Department last year, had over 6,500 participants at the Halloween Walk, 3,575 at the Christmas Walk, just over 660 participants in the youth sports, which includes the Little League, girls softball, Rocket Football, and pretty impressive number. This goes back to all the hard work that Dick and all the other individuals that have diligently worked on the trails over the years. Almost 3,800 people on an average utilize, this one specifically is a Reiki Trail, but I can assure you that if they're walking the Reiki Trail, they're walking the Auburn Waterloo Trail, and they'll be walking the Pokabash when that's done. Some of the key accomplishments in 2024 was the installation of the equipment at Willnar Park over off Elm Street and Duesenberg area. New equipment beginning to be installed in Don Lash Park over off Timber Trace, and that should be completed soon. The Eckhart Park Vehicular Bridge itself was installed. This year, they'll be working on the columns and the lighting to complete that entire project. We began the Memorial Park Help Renovation Project in 2024, which is slated to be finished in July of 2025. That was another project that we partnered with Auburn Main Street. They installed several new ADA-compliant drinking fountains throughout the park systems, and then they also installed a Mike Walter Memorial Wetland sign down on Touring Drive just south of Walmart. There were the road dead ends. We're going to get to the fun stuff now. Auburn Water Department, Water Superintendent is Randy Harvey. By the numbers, the Water Department pumped over 846 million gallons of water, which is up almost 100 million from the previous year. They installed over 5,000 feet of new water main throughout the city. We had 117 new customers tie in. They also installed 14 new fire hydrants, which brings that number up to 1,163. Some of their key accomplishments is they're always trying to stay ahead of the game when it comes to regulations, whether it be state or federal. They implemented the new orthophosphate injection system, They implemented the new orthophosphate injection system, which was in preparation of the upcoming regulation changes concerning the presence of lead in the water. Please note that our water lead levels do remain below the national standard, and one of their biggest projects in 2024 was the water main replacement on South Baxter from 7th to 15th Street, which they're almost close to being done with the water and sewer, and will begin the street reconstruction here in the next month. I thought we got to the fun stuff, but. Next is Auburn Wastewater. Wastewater Superintendent is Todd Sadison. 2024 CSO 9 came online, which is out on the south end of Eckhart Park. That is one of the requirements that has been handed down to the city, and we do have one more to complete as well. Prior to that system going online, we had five CSO events in 2023. We had one in January of 2024, and no other CSO events since the CSO 9 came online. The new CSO project, which is a requirement to be completed and wrapped up by 2028, is a 60% complete design. So, we're looking at finishing design this year, installation in '26, monitoring in ' '27, and file our final reports in '28, which should fully meet the requirement that has been handed down to the city. They processed over 1 billion gallons of waste. Just under 1,700 tons of bio solids distributed as part of the department's sludge disposal program. They installed 200 feet of sanitary sewer line over on Jackson Street and another 350 of sewer on Baxter as part of that project from 7th to 15th. Some of the other initiatives we've had is we've tried to improve our community outreach. One of the main ones is through our city website. We have updated it with links to all the organizations within not only the city but DeKalb County. Under the engineering tab, you can go on there and see a complete list of the projects. I know we would get a lot of calls, what's going on here when they see ground being broke? So, under the engineering tab, you can go on there and look at every project that has begun. It has an estimated timeline, any type of public document or rendering that's available, and then we'll update that with progress as we're able to throughout the year. Also, as our street work is assigned for the current year, we will get those uploaded. That'll be full recons, resurfacing, or even the crack seal. So, the goal there is to be more transparent. You also have the ability to go on the website, punch in your email address, your phone number to get an initial list of projects. As a new project or detail is uploaded, it'll automatically send you a notification. One of the my favorite things, I actually had quite a few favorite things in '24, but we had mayor for the day. We had two first-grade students after school was out come in and be mayor for the day, and they pretty much here for about, I'd say about six hours. You know, they recognize that. That's the first time I've ever wore a bowtie too, so. But that's something we're going to continue with the elementary schools here in the city. One of the other things is I attended a conference early 2024, and I had a mayor from Seymour talk about the importance of connecting with your employees. And so, I try to dedicate a few hours a week to go out with the various departments, work in the field. I get down and dirty. I don't, I don't stand back and watch them. And if you ever need me to run that vac truck, let me know, Randy. And there was many days where I had to go home and shower before I came to work, and just one thing that sticks out is I was down there with Bill. Bill took me out. We were going to look at the different street applications throughout the city, and I thought that's all we were doing that day. So, I'm in a shirt and a tie because I had some meetings afterwards, and the employees were disappointed I wasn't going out to cut up a tree. So, I think they enjoyed it as well, and I do too, and it's just a way to get to know them, whether it be on a personal level, professional level, learn about their families and their history. So, that's something that I plan on continuing as well. As we did at the beginning of the meeting, Citizen of the Year, we recognized Tyler this year. I would say late fall, we'll start taking recommendations or nominations again for the next award, which we'll give away at the State of the City in 2026. Council passed a resolution in 2024 to create a youth advisory council, which we had seven applicants, so we will be able to utilize all seven. That's open to high school students, grades nine through 12th, and we look to start that council in May. So, we'll be doing our interviews and getting that set up here soon. One other thing we've started doing is the mornings with the mayor. Typically on a Saturday morning, you'll find me at a local coffee shop. We'll put it out there, gives residents an opportunity to come in and ask questions. I see one familiar face in here, I believe, Vince. Yeah, I see Vince a lot at the coffee shop, but it's just another way that, you know, people can have access. Obviously, our doors are always open during the work week as well. Some of our upcoming projects is our State Road Eight beautification project, which will begin here probably within the next month. We're getting ready to award that contract. That is a partnership with the Auburn Redevelopment Commission, and that is going to be installation of sidewalks, replacement of sidewalks from Depot Street to Grand Staff, new lights, new sod, and just beautify that corridor, and that'll tie into the Endot project that's slated in 2026, which will go from Grand Staff to Touring. So, when you get off the interstate, you will have a well-manicured corridor from I-69 all the way through downtown. One of the other projects we began is Engineering Smith Drive Connection, which is out on the east side. It stops short of State Road Eight. So, we're looking at making that connection most likely in '27. Engineering should be completed sometime next year. That'll be connecting to State Road Eight and installing sidewalks from Hunter's Glen and connecting them just east of Duesenberg, where the current sidewalk stops, and that'll provide connectivity from Hunter's Glen all the way to Walmart. So, that's one of our goals is to connect the areas of the city. One other thing, I know Darryl and his team has done a good job as, and street department and some others, looking at aerials and finding out where our gaps are. I know we did a couple in 2024 where we filled in those gaps to ensure that walkability, and we're going to continue to do that as well. One thing that department heads, clerk's office, mayor's office, city council, we all worked diligently on implementing zero-based budgeting with our municipal advisor. It was a very tedious process in year one, but we made it through it, and as a result, we seen a $1.1 million reduction in the budget from 2024 to 2025. So, I'd just like to say, great job. And we're going to finish, I'd like to finish with this, that one thing Auburn's dedicated to is enhancing the overall well-being and satisfaction of our citizens by providing quality of life and quality of place. And that is all made possible by our citizens, our departments, city council, our administrations, as well as the organizations, Auburn Main Street, the Visitors Bureau, Economic Development, which we have a representative here, and I believe we have a representative from Main Street here as well somewhere. There she is. DABBA, and other organizations. I think we've worked well together in 2024, and I'm excited to see what we accomplish in 2025. So, thank you. On, council president.
No report.
Yeah. Plan, commission.
We have nothing on the agenda for next week.
Yeah. Committees?
Nothing for tax basis. ordinance resolution, I know I'm working with Zach here on a couple of different things, so we might have some things coming up shortly.
Yeah.
Finance committee meeting will be April 4th here in Chambers. I'm sorry, April 9th, from 9:00 to 11:00.
Thank you. Any unfinished business?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting in memory of Mike Watson.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Harry, none. I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Any other new business? General good and well for the community.
This meeting of the Auburn Common Council will be adjourned in memory of former city council member and county commissioner, Mike Watson. Mike served in the city of Auburn and DeKalb County for over 20 years, leaving a lasting impact on our community. Throughout his years of dedication and public service, Mike held various leadership roles, including president of Auburn Economic Development Commission, president of DeKalb Central Foundation, president of DeKalb County Chamber Partnership, and president of the Auburn Development Advisory Committee, now known as Auburn Main Street. He was an active member in Auburn Kiwanis, Downtown Auburn Business Association, Auburn Plan Commission, Auburn Common Council, DeKalb County Commissioner, and served as president of Indiana County Commissioners Northeast District. In December of 2024, Mike received the distinguished County Commissioner of the Year Award by the Indiana County Commissioners Association.
Thank you. Mike's commitment to public service was supported by his wife, Marion, whom he married 35 years ago. Marion stood by his side as he selflessly served our community in countless ways. At this time, I ask that we stand and observe a moment of silence in honor of Mike Watson. His conversations, dedication, leadership, and compassion will be dearly missed by all who knew him. Next regular council meeting is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Okay, we have a motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
With this, the March 4th, 2025 meeting of the Auburn Common Council is officially adjourned in Mike Watson's memory, marking the common councils and the city of Auburn's deep respect for his many years of service and dedication. Meeting adjourned.